It's six thirty, so. It's six thirty, we will call our special work session of May eighteenth, two thousand twenty to order. We have a quorum. Our public forum is temporarily suspended. Uh, bill discussion. Anyone have any questions with the bills? I have two. One, it shows us a police tow for one thousand one hundred ninety-seven dollars. Just seemed like a lot to tow a vehicle.
That's related to that.
Yeah, we had to tow a vehicle to the crime lab and then tow it back.
Oh, okay.
Uh, incident, yeah.
All right. Uh, the one other thing that I saw, it says RF fobs for a little over sixty-five hundred dollars under equipment.
That would be the, uh, it's a device that we use to log into our computer system from our squads and from our computers. And that, those costs will be distributed out through the Morrison County Sheriff's Office and then the other agencies on our server. So we purchased those fobs upfront because they're connected to a device within our, uh, network. And then we build them back to the agencies, uh, that need them. So the majority of those costs would be billed back over to the agencies.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions about the bills? Consent agenda item discussion. Mister Kim, I don't know if you're here, but I have a question that's kind of part of the consent agenda. I noticed in our water treatment plant, we treated about thirty million gallons of water just under. But our wastewater treatment plant treated almost forty-five million gallons. Do we have that much groundwater getting in?
We do. Uh, we're starting to see the groundwater come in. And so I guess that is an additional water that we're treating as the, the groundwater.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Council informational only items. Item A, picnic tables downtown area. Great.
Yes, so, um, we, last Friday, we did install or place, I should say, six picnic tables on, uh, First Street as well as on Second Street. Um, with the coronavirus, uh, issue coming up here, we're trying to make it as, um, painless, I guess, if you will, to force some of those business owners to do the, the takeout deliveries. So they can order it, wait for their food at the picnic tables, um, and then take it home to eat it. Uh, we've placed those where the sidewalk was wide enough that, uh, it wouldn't block the pedestrian access road. So you'll notice some of the places like on twenty-seven, the sidewalk is just not wide enough. We, we've placed one there, it would completely block it. So we've placed, uh, two of them between First Avenue Southeast and Broadway. Two picnic tables between Broadway and First Avenue Northeast. And then two picnic tables between Broadway and First Avenue, uh, Northeast on Second Street.
Any questions about those?
Mr. President, I had someone ask me, um, if that typically goes before the council for approval. And John, you can chime in, but I think we did that because of the mayor's emergency, um, resolution.
Correct. Yeah, we, we wanted to ensure that, um, those businesses that were interconnected, that, that order was changed, um, effective before, they would be impacted before the, the next council meeting. So there is the time between the last council meeting and this meeting when they allowed for more restaurants, um, activity. And then today they're allowed to be opened up to fifty percent effective. So we wanted to, um, be ready for that with last weekend being so nice. The weekend before probably wasn't, wasn't that great their wise. Um, so, so that was good that could get out for this meeting.
And I saw about four hundred likes on Facebook because of that.
Any other questions or comments? Item B, part-time patrol officers or the police department chief?
Mr. President, I'm the council. I, uh, added a request for an additional part-timer, which would be a third part-timer. Uh, what's happened, um, the council originally authorized replacement of a full-time officer through the loss of, uh, Craig Seeland in the fire department. And then two part-timers to backfill, uh, openings, uh, because we had one person on, uh, medical leave. Well, since this occurred, I had another, uh, full-time officer go on medical leave. So I have two full-time officers out of slots on, uh, medical restriction. Uh, I'm currently able to staff right now because, uh, Kenny Tappus is back of, of his SRO slot from school. So he's filling a full-time rotation. So my request to the council would be to add an additional part-time officer, which would, uh, uh, be three part-time officers, uh, to kind of fill that, uh, vacancy. And then through these part-timers that we're hiring, um, possibly, uh, if we at some point lose, uh, some of those officers, if they leave due to their medical, uh, condition or, uh, issue, um, we could train these people up and they would be, uh, in a position then to be eligible for a full-time slot.
Chief, and I could, uh, add to that if you're all right with it. Um, I was in on the interviews and, um, are these all going to be official tonight? Names are out?
Uh, internally, they are, yes.
Yeah, okay. Um, well, just the fact that we had some really good candidates and, uh, there was two of them that seemed that they, we, when we did the interview, seemed like some real up-and-comers that could benefit us short time and long term. And then we had another one that, um, is in the business, um, who we thought would be a great addition to the staff, would possibly very, be very part-time. So, um, the committee thought it would be great if the council would approve one more part-timer.
The part-timers we, that we have on staff, if they are full-time with another agency, uh, that agency assumes their training. Uh, the majority of their training costs, um, the cost to the city would be outfitting them and their initial training. So, uh, once that's done, to have them, uh, uh, in the ranks basically doesn't cost the city anything. And, uh, you know, they work for years if, uh, they don't leave, uh, for another agency somewhere else, so.
It actually helps to save us overtime too, doesn't it?
It, it does considerably, yes.
Any other questions or comments? Item C, chickens in non-agricultural or residential zone districts. Frank.
I was approached by a community member about the possibility of him raising chickens with his kids. He gave an example that a friend of his has them in Ossio. And, uh, they do real well there, Ossio loves chickens. And, uh, also, I was online with my granddaughter doing her homework, uh, she's from Bloomington. And they had a day where kids brought in their pets and one kid brought in their chicken. Uh, it seemed to be a very well-behaved chicken and, but he explained how they, they get eggs from their chickens. They only have a few, I think that he said they had three of them. So Bloomington must allow it, I'm, I'm not sure, but this kid had them anyway. And, uh, I was on the council back when this was voted in by a majority of the council, but then was vetoed by not the existing or current mayor, but the mayor at the time vetoed it. And it became, uh, I don't know, a political thing at the time and eventually, eventually it didn't go through. And then it was brought up one time after that and we never had any action on it. There was never a vote or anything. It was more like, we feel we should bring this up or address it one more time. And, uh, I can tell you when the last vote took place, I was in favor because I feel when kids have something to do like that, it teaches them responsibility. And they're really not that harmful if it's monitored right. I haven't heard from any communities where they said it, it's been a bad thing for their community from those who had them. So I just told this person that I'd bring it up to the council and it says, can't hurt, you know? If they want to entertain, uh, you know, checking into this a little bit and take it to a vote again. Um, that's always a possibility. So that's pretty much what I'm doing is just bringing it before the council.
Mr. President, if I may, I, I, I'm in support of it and I was the last time we brought the issue up. Hens only.
Yeah, that was one of the discussions. They didn't want, uh, something out there waking everybody up in the neighborhood. Um, hens don't have a tendency to do that. And if hens make noises, it's because there's probably something in the area that shouldn't be, that's distressing them. So that would be a, a good alarm.
And there'd be conjugal.
Whose job will it be to monitor it then?
I think that if the word gets out there, uh, neighbors are not gonna allow somebody to start a chicken farm up on their property. It'd have to be something that we set guidelines and most are reports on anything like that, even dog barking and stuff. There isn't anyone out there monitoring the dogs. It's, uh, it's a neighbor that reports if there's a dog that's getting loud. And I think it'd be the same thing with the chickens, uh, probably more monitoring by the people around, especially if it's bothering them. They're gonna probably keep a pretty close eye on it. But you don't know, the last time we discussed this, uh, there's ways you can set up where they have to have a certain kind of, uh, uh, hut for them, hen house. It has to be away from the neighbor's property so far, um. And you have to get rid of the manure because that could attract, like, even dogs, you know? If you don't clean up after them, they could.
Sorry, I'm late, I.
Pardon me?
No, I'm muted, I gotta turn around.
Oh, you're on.
Okay. Glad it was somebody contesting what I was saying. Anyway. Uh, anyway, personally, I think it's a good idea to bring it up again. Uh, I'm with Leif on this one, so, anyway. When it comes to, uh, closure, it depends on how everybody votes toward it. So I think, uh, if we get the opportunity, especially now with this, well, this whole COVID thing, uh, it would give kids something to do at home. Eggs, if you notice the price of eggs right now, they went pretty high. If you had a chicken, it'd probably pay for itself in a short time. The meat prices are going up, so they can always eat the thing. But anyway, enough said.
You just said it was a pet, now you're gonna eat him?
We had a pet Holstein steer when I was a kid called Lamb because it was all white and, uh, we didn't realize that my dad was raising it for us to eat. So he, one day he killed it and we kinda, all the kids in the family refused to eat lamb. Then about two weeks later, my dad said, told us that he switched lamb. My uncle's about.
Can anybody hear me? Yes, Jim, we can hear you.
I can't hear anybody. Anyway.
Mister President.
Yes.
I would, uh, you know, my concern, one of my main concerns is, has to do with like the, uh, blight properties. Uh, takes us a year and a half or so to get it straightened out.
So I'm trying to get into this right now. Does he have his, his mute button? I, I, I got it now, I got it now.
You can hear us?
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
All right, I'm sorry, I, I have a trouble, uh, being, uh, online. So I'm up at, I'm up at Red Lake Christian, so I'm here now. Go ahead, Mister Mick.
Um, just the, uh, like I was saying, the blight that takes a year and a half to take care of. And believe me, if that was my neighbor and it took that long to get rid of, uh, messy chicken coops or the chickens were running around. And I know that you can adopt the ordinance on size lots and all that, but, um, I don't believe I was in favor last time. And I don't believe I will be this time either.
Is there a possibility to handle it just like you handle a dog? If a dog's cubs and, uh, issues, you call up, you call up a tabbit and he comes out, takes care of it, this is an animal. And you find, just like a dog, if it's barking too much or making too much of a disturbance, there should be a fine allocated for that. And you ha, in my eye, if you handle it the same way, it wouldn't be like us going through the court, dealing with someone's personal property like houses, lights and things like that.
Mister President, may I jump in here for a second?
Yeah.
Mister President and council members, uh, just to give you a little bit of background, uh, there are a couple of different ways that you could move forward with this. Uh, certainly some large cities, including, uh, St. Paul, for instance, uh, does treat it as a animal issue. And so it is taken care of, uh, rather swiftly if there's an issue. Uh, from my personal experience, uh, in fact, two roosters who were my very noisy neighbors when this quarantine started, uh, are no longer with us. And so there are ways that we can put an ordinance together where it would certainly be something that could be taken care of, uh, nearly immediately if there were issues on that side. And also, uh, on the other side, we could, you know, look at different ways to deal with the, the chicken coop ordinance as well.
Mister President, I guess my concern is if we allow chickens, then who's gonna stop the next, the next person to come up and say, well, I, I want, uh, pigmegos or, um, I want, uh, pigs, uh, baby pigs, hot bellies.
No offense.
You know, what's gonna, what's gonna stop definitely say, well, you know, he can raise chickens, why can't I raise pigs? Or why can't I raise goats? Are you gonna discriminate against the types of animals that we're raising here? I just think opening that up is gonna lead to a whole new box of worms. And, uh, I wasn't for it the last time and, uh, I'm not for it this time either.
Well, don't you think it's kind of prejudiced having just cats and dogs and hamsters, not allowing other things? You know? So if you're gonna go that route, we're already being kind of biased here. But anyway.
I think a chicken is a farm animal. And, and chickens belong on farms, they're farm animals, they're not town animals.
I don't think it's that. Sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, Brian.
I, I have a question, um. Now, are these, um, Frank, are these good, are these, we talking about free-roaming chickens or are they gonna be in a pen? Uh, or what are we talking?
They'd have to be in a pen. Uh, you can't teach a chicken how to stay on their property, they're not that smart. So, uh, they'd have to be contained somehow. Uh, I raised them in Bowles, we were within the city limits. We had no problem, everyone else raised them too.
That's what I was gonna say, I don't think it's been that many years ago that people had chickens in their backyards in Little Falls.
It hasn't been, no.
I would be willing to guess that there are some at this time.
I'm sure that there are. Mister President, what would the parliamentary procedure be for this now? Cause this was voted on it at one time, correct? Um, before most of us were on here.
I, uh, council member Story, I believe if we would draft this, it would be an entirely new ordinance. We would address it that way. I don't think we have to follow our, our procedure, um, around a no vote, bringing it back. And as we discussed prior to you arriving, uh, this was actually voted, at one time was voted in by the, and then vetoed by a previous mayor. So in the last time that we discussed it as a council, it never actually came up as a, as an action item, um, during a regular, uh, conversation in the, um, in the work session. And there wasn't consensus support to move forward with even taking a vote on it at that time.
Mister President, so would that veto action that was taken, would that still be in effect? And do we have, uh, any action that can be taken to override a veto?
I believe there is, but there wasn't at that time. And this was a number of years ago, so I don't know, we, we probably can, in the ordinance specific that they drafted earlier. The league puts other, um, updates, that's what's current in the shared screen, um, is just specific to urban chickens, um, which they have some recommendations for. But you wanna be, you know, very careful of what requirements you, you add and what, um, restrictions you're going to have on chickens when you draft this. So if it were to be something that we wanted to, they didn't want to bring this forward for discussion, we would want to work on drafting an ordinance first, um, before we bring it at a regular meeting. So at this point, it's work session discussion, do we want to pursue drafting that ordinance? Or is it not gonna happen at all? So, and there is some support here, so I, I, you, you can give us direction as staff and we will proceed accordingly.
So if we were to be working on an ordinance, is that something that we would have to vote on? Or can we just say, let's look at the ord, let's draft up an ordinance and then let's take a look at that and then see where we want to go with it?
I think we would draft, yeah, the, um, in an ideal situation, we draft the ordinance and we have another work session discussion based on what that, what the terms of that ordinance are. And if it's too strict, not strict enough, um, you know, that, that we can get some further feedback before we bring it back. Again, ordinances also need to, um, be introduced first, uh, when they go to the regular meeting. So we want to be clear of what is actually in the ordinance first before we introduce it. And it needs to, state, state mandates have to publish it for a minimum of ten days, which we do, um, after we introduce the ordinance. It is part of the council pack, so it's published on our website. Um, and then it's, then we vote on it at the following meeting. So we, we meet the state requirements for that. It's just, we don't want to be going and since aging in ordinance between the time it's introduced and the time it's finally approved. That's why if we did bring this up for discussion, we'd wanna make sure we understand what the council's appetite is for this if it were to be approved, um, versus, you know, drafting something, bringing it to you, having it go through a number of changes before, um, before it does, um, does get introduced.
So right now, do we have anyone here? One, one last, one question. Um, would it, would the, would it be the best to do, just kind of make a motion to draft an or, uh, draft up an ordinance? And then let's take a look at that before we actually vote on whether that's gonna come into effect or not?
No, you don't need to make a motion at this, at, in the work session, you don't make motions in the work session, purely discussion. If there's enough, you know, appetite from a few council members that we want to draft something so that we would have something to vote on, then we can do that.
Okay. Right now, do we have anything prohibiting chickens?
Yes, our ordinance is prohibited.
And I'm afraid this was gonna fall on the back of the police department to enforce and more problems, uh, they got bigger chickens to fry. So I, I believe I'll be, uh, firm, firm no if we bring it, but I know we're not voting.
Does an ordinance require, um, a public hearing?
No.
No?
No. Not, not all ordinances, right? There are certain specifics, items that require public hearings. Um, some of them may actually be ordinances, but this would not.
John, do we have enough for you or do we need to say yes or no before we move ahead?
We certainly draft some, some type of ordinance and we can have a next conversation at a work session if we choose to.
Uh, I think we should do that.
Yeah.
Pavement, pavement maintenance project update, Greg.
Yes, uh, so I just wanted to update the council a little bit here. Um, we are still working on the surface improvements project. We do have the plans about ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent completed. Uh, we're looking at bidding that basically late in July. It's so good, it's time to get this completed this year. But, uh, we are mindful of how the coronavirus potentially impacts our city budget. So that's why we're kind of pushing it off later in the year just to see how, how all of the budgets, uh, fall into place with everything before we go ahead and let this project, uh, because this is one of those where it is definitely a big ticket item. Uh, we would like to do it this year because it is beneficial to our, our payments in the long run. But we understand the short-term impacts that, uh, that we may see with our budgets. We are looking at about sixteen blocks worth of, uh, improvements. I do have kind of a, a map, but I don't, it didn't get included in the, in the package, so I'll list that here. It's Sixth Avenue Northeast between, Fifth Av, or Fifth Street through basically the river on the, uh, west side of the project. Fifth Avenue Northeast, again, from Fifth Street all the way over to the river. Second Avenue Northeast, that is between First and Second Street and Third and Fourth Street. Then we do have some on the west side, we're looking at Third Avenue Northwest, Second Avenue Northwest, Fifth Avenue Northwest. Those are between Third and Lumberg Drive. And then Second Avenue Northwest between Third and Fourth Street. First Avenue Northwest between Sixth and Seventh Street. And Eighth Avenue Southwest between Sixth and Seventh Street. These are all, uh, blocks and portions of the city system that don't need utility infrastructure repairs underneath them. So they're good candidates for rehab, uh, and the payment's in such a condition that, uh, it does warrant rebuilding that, that payment section.
I have a quick question here. I, I had Greg send me the map because I wanted to look at these. I actually have that up on my screen. If, would it work if I just do share screen for a moment?
Yeah. Sure can, Leif, um, yeah, if you go to that bar at the bottom and do this, insert the tear.
Uh, it says I can't while other participant is sharing.
Oh, then I will pause on that. I'll try.
Can you see it?
I think you have to slide today.
Hi?
You can slide it and do the share again. There you go.
Awesome.
Can you zoom in on it a little bit, please?
Sure can, sure can. Right, so there's only one southwest. And then northwest and then, uh, some good chunks here. Fifth and Sixth Avenue. Good enough.
Thank you.
Back at you, John.
Okay.
Any questions about that for Greg?
No, just the statement, I, I, I like what Greg had to say about pushing it off so we can get an idea of how things are gonna shake out here. Not going crazy after this one here. Uh, Greg, what, what, what's a melon overlay run approximately per block?
So we're asking, estimating these to be about three hundred to three hundred fifty thousand for those sixteen blocks. Um, you can't forget, or I'll stop the math with the, with those. Um, but we're estimating those blocks to do about three hundred fifty thousand dollars worth.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
That's the total cost, correct?
That's the total, yes.
License fee discussion, Lori.
Um, yes, so we have had, um, a couple of requests and, and. Yes, so we have had a couple of requests and, and have seen in the news that some other cities related to the on-sale liquor licenses, those licenses cost to the bars about three thousand dollars a year. Had a couple inquiries as to whether or not the city would consider refunding a portion of that license because they've been closed basically for two months, two and a half months. Some cities are doing those refunds, and they're doing them by deducting that amount from next year's license fee. There haven't been too many that have actually cut them checks, but they have said that they will, you know, give them a credit going forward towards next year. Some of our bars haven't paid their full year, they have an option to pay half in December and then the other half in, I think it's June. So we have a couple of them that haven't paid their second half yet. You know, so just wondering from the council if you have any thoughts, if that's something you'd like to pursue. The licenses are three thousand dollars a year, so that average is out to two hundred and fifty dollars a month.
Mr. President?
Yes?
I would like to see us do something, as you know, you're a large party with the EDA and we've been working a lot to try to help our downtown Little Falls citywide businesses through this. And since they weren't able to use it, I would be in favor of some kind of a proration. And also I had, I talked to all, every bar in town last Friday, and I had a couple of them ask if we could defer it for the second half for one month. And Lori, I don't know how many, how many are paying, making two payments, but they asked if we could defer it the second half until July, so they had some time to make some money. And I don't know if that's a huge difference, but I just want to throw that out there with it.
I would agree with the mayor here on both accounts, deferment and a proration. I mean, right as the clock is right now, right? We got two months where they're having a license that they can't utilize to generate income.
Would agree.
Mr. President, I agree too. Anything we can do to keep these businesses in Little Falls and get through this is a bonus for the city.
So would you consider doing an actual refund or just giving them credit towards next year's license?
I think I'd prefer a credit toward next year's license. Yes, Mr. President, I think that would be the best way to go.
Because it could put a little bit of undue pressure on the city, you know, like we're trying to make up our mind if we're even going to run some projects here because of what might be coming, and we don't want to throw away what we have. So I would be in favor of next year, you don't give them a break that.
Or could we do it to include if they haven't paid the second half this year? Or is that too much like a refund if they paid the whole thing for the people that did?
I think there's, Mr. President, I think there's one piece to consider too, just knowing the work that we've been doing on the EDA with the emergency loan programs. Just cash on hand is a struggle if they haven't been operating and been able to get any revenue, and especially if they weren't successful in getting any other, other aid like PPP or, or funds from, through the state. I mean, we're, if it is two months, we're talking five hundred hours roughly, maybe a little bit more because it says they're, they're, they're going to be out for more than two months. So I don't think this is going to be a huge cash flow issue on our part, but we can certainly bring forward some options for discussion at the next meeting with how we want to approach that.
I'm thinking that the businesses could really use the cash now. Is that what you're saying, John?
That's, that's what I'm saying, yes.
They could use the cash now, and so, you know, refund them for two months. And just kind of leave it there, just agree they could get a two-month refund.
Yeah, and leave the, and leave the fee as is.
Right.
You know, if they're on a payment schedule, they just pay it as they normally would.
How is the county and the state handling this? Because, you know, if they're out of business that time, are they going to go to the county and say, we need not to pay so much of our taxes this year? Then we also have restaurants and everything that this is affecting them quite a bit. Do the restaurants pay anything if they serve, you know, beer or anything like that in a restaurant? Do they have to pay a fee or should they get that back too? I mean, this goes a little further than just the bars.
So we don't license the restaurants, you know, if they have, if they're selling liquor, then they have a liquor license, and so they would be a part of this. The only other thing I would add for discussion is part of the requirement for the liquor license is that all of the establishments are current on their taxes, which would include their sales tax, their city restaurant tax, and their property taxes. And not knowing about property taxes, but I, you know, the restaurant tax, some of them are delinquent in their payment of restaurant tax. So I don't know if that's a consideration in refunding, you know, the liquor license holders or not.
But I agree with Jerry Knopfler, Jerry was saying that we want to do everything we can to make sure we don't lose any of the businesses. I think it's something really worth looking into here, giving them some form of break.
Well, and I agree with what Raquel said, because some of these businesses need the money now and are as soon as possible, and if we wait till the next meeting in two weeks and then another week or two after that, then we're another month out. But if, and this is kind of on the line of what Raquel said, is that if they paid the whole year, I would refund, I'd be in favor of refunding the two months or whatever prorates to. And if they're paying their second half, haven't paid their second half yet, I would discount it from that. But that's just my thoughts.
Mr. President, I think this whole thing, you know, we're looking at, you know, five hundred dollars for these establishments. The problem is, is they probably lost tens, if, or thousands, if not tens of thousands of dollars in cash revenue from being shut down, you know. So I'm not, you know, every little bit helps, but, you know, I, I think this is just a small little something that really isn't going to have a whole lot of effect on these people at this particular time.
Well, Mr. President, just doing that shows those businesses here in town that we as a, we as a city appreciate what they're doing for us and how important they are to our community. And even, even that small amount says something to them.
Mr. President, would it be possible to maybe defer the payment for the rest of this year till after they can get up and going? And then saying, next year, we're going to reduce your fees. So this way, when they are up and running and they do have that cash flow in hand, it might mean a little bit more to them. I'm just a thought, I'm just kind of...
I think if we defer it, then they're operating without having paid for a license. I think you have to pay for a liquor license in order to sell liquor. So deferring it is not a good idea. But if we refund the ones that have paid for the time that they have been forced to be closed, it would be, as Jerry said, a really great sign to them, even though it's not, it's only five hundred dollars. It's a good sign, that way they know that we're, we're being supportive.
Yes, and I like the way the mayor worded to do it. Done enough, Lori?
Well, if you want to make that, if you want us to do that, you want us to do it now, we will actually need council action on that, so can we add that to the agenda then for discussion?
I think that would be a good idea.
That'll become item G under due?
Yep.
All right. Item F, Lead for America Fellowship, John.
Thank you, Council President, this will be in the discussion tonight in the regular meeting, but I want a quick update. So we, I had updated you a few months ago about a fellowship opportunity that we had with partnership of, for Lead for America. The way this works is they identify communities that they want to partner with that, to do a fellowship program. Generally, these are in an area of whatever the community decides is the focus area that we want. And one of the items that we're really looking at at that time was having somebody dedicated to help us work on these projects, like the Art Town Five, Six, Three, Four, Five, the local foods, local places plans, and taking those plans and actually moving them forward with action, the action items and goals that came out of that work that we had and community engagement that we had, and trying to drive this project forward. Well, obviously with, with the coronavirus and the impacts that we have and the receptions that we're facing, those future-oriented ideas are not our priorities as much anymore. We're very much focusing on, like with the EDA, the business, emergency loans, trying to keep our, the doors of these businesses open and trying to make sure that our main street can survive through this, through this crisis. And what I feel we can really move this fellowship forward is actually to kind of pivot those future-oriented ideas and move them off into later times and focus on somebody that can be a worldly, a strong asset for those local businesses and local partners around the things that we can do together with the city and them to, you know, make sure that they're sustainable, viable, you know, that they get the resources and support that they need from the city. You know, similarly to this discussion we just had on liquor licenses. Those are, those are some more impacts that we could be having with, with the fellowship candidate and, and bringing those, bringing those forward for us so that we can, we can find a way to make a decision. The focus areas that I've identified and that I've had conversations on them are really towards that economic development piece. So I really strongly believe that this is a, you know, would belong as an expense out of the economic development funds that we have and projects that we would be working on. So since the March timeframe when we were talking, I was originally going to be bringing this forward, we've actually identified a new funding source to help support this and offset it through the AmeriCorps. And they will actually be contributing about fifteen thousand dollars a year towards this, towards this fellowship. The, the cost was going to be around forty-two thousand dollars a year, and it would be at least a two-year commitment for us. And so having a conversation, I do have a commitment from Sourcewell, that's, that's a firm commitment that we can utilize the allocation of internship dollars in our administration department or all the semesters in which the fellowship would be there. So that equates to fifteen thousand, three hundred sixty dollars a year. Then adding that with the AmeriCorps, I also have a strong commitment from the Initiative Foundation that they have funds dedicated towards economic development-related projects and ideas in, in their communities and their territory, and those funds could be available for a five thousand dollar grant. The ability for those in the second year is not entirely clear. If we can reuse that same application, if it's doing something that's identical, but we certainly would be, we wouldn't be prohibited from applying. And so with that, in year one, we have a balance of six thousand, seven hundred twenty-one dollars. And I would propose that we fund that through the, the economic development authority. And then they would, we'd be bringing this agreement to them at their next meeting, which would be this Friday. So I just was looking for the council's support on this to move it forward and, and move forward with this arrangement of hosting a fellow. The only expenses after the fact are just, we do, we would be agreeing to host the fellow, providing them some equipment and a space to work out of. We have that available at City Hall whenever it is that we do reopen, but the fellowship isn't planning on starting again until August timeframe. So this, we do have some time to leave. And the candidate we have, I've met on numerous occasions, and I believe she is excellent for the work that we have, especially with the projects down the road that we have for local foods, local places. She had a very good educational background in practice right now, bringing that farm economy with our small-town economies and trying to drive, bring forward some of those mainstream ideas. We connect them to our, our farmers and, and so believe that this is going to be a great asset and resource and coming at very little cost to the city. The year one cost is six thousand, seven hundred twenty-one dollars. Year two, aren't able to successfully get another foundation grant, would just be over a little ounce of dollars to leverage eighty-four thousand dollars over two years of, of work from, from somebody that's going to dedicate at least thirty hours of work.
Any questions, anyone?
Somebody needs to go on mute.
I have a question, Mr. President.
Go ahead.
The second little arrow says Lead for America pays the fellow a monthly stipend, healthcare stipend and housing stipend, stipend, which are all based on guideline lines like AmeriCorps. So Lead for America pays the fellow.
Yes.
So you have to come up with all this other money?
So we, we actually pay them, Lead for America upfront, and then they use those funds to pay the stipend over time.
Okay, so Lead for America isn't actually paying them out of their money. They're paying their money that we raise on their behalf.
Not entirely, they do have, they're the ones that secured the AmeriCorps dollars, so that's actually less money upfront than we have to pay.
So they, okay, fifteen thousand dollars they secure.
For you.
Thank you.
Innovation Funding Resolution, Farmers Market Pavilion, John.
Thank you, Council President. With the changes in the legislative session and the legislative session actually ending last night, no local option sales tax picks were moved forward out of that, out of this legislative session. A little later, any likelihood of that coming up in special session, which very likely will take place, but only to, more likely to only do a bombing bill and some other major items. Local option sales taxes were actually mostly written out of a lot of conference committees and there was no proposals that made it forward out of committee that included local option sales tax projects. So having a conversation with the mayor, he asked me to move forward on some additional items and ideas for a project. And one thing that came out of the local foods, local places project was having a central location close to downtown that could be a whole site for our farmer's market as well as a site for additional community activities and spaces. So with that, that idea has, has resonated into a pavilion that we would try to locate downtown and, and make an application through Sourcewell's initiative or innovation funding, which is the deadline of this Wednesday, to, you know, to help finance a large portion of that project. Additionally, there's a USDA grant program for small and rural communities that also supports and would be a strong candidate for this. That deadline for that grant application is in July. And this would pair really well if we were successful with the innovation grant to use that as the matching dollars for the project. It doesn't, their USDA's match isn't required to be a single cash commitment from its city partner. So I think between the two, if we weren't successful, then, you know, with securing both, either or both of those grants, depending on the scope of the project, I think we would, we would want to probably hold off on it, you know, in light of these times. But I think there's, both of them are worthwhile right now to try to move forward.
But I think there's, both of them are worthwhile right now to try to, um, move forward with in order to see if we can, we can, you know, successfully implement this project. One location that I, um, I've had conversations with the Little Falls Farmers Market and other partners in town was around the Washington Playground area across the street from the library. That would be a good location, as well as potentially something on the west side of the Labor J Park area. You know, potentially could be a good, uh, for a pavilion structure like that, knowing the soil quality, we, we have some concerns, but, and ultimately, long-term, potentially, if the bridge project goes through, that would be the accessibility challenge. But, um, either way, the, the site should be close to, to downtown. That's how other, um, you know, cities and farmer's markets have, have had some really successful places.
John, isn't this something that the park board should be doing?
It's certainly something that they, they could consider, but this is a, it did come out of that work with the Local Foods, Local Places as an, as an action item. Um, you know, in, in light of the times, it was, it was kind of put to the back burner. But, um, you know, we know the innovation funding deadline was extended, and I do feel we, we have the time and the possibility to, to actually put together a really informative application. And I'm not certain what other communities, um, are, are doing. And if those dollars are, are, you know, available, I think we could, it would be really beneficial to, to make this project happen.
If we would get both of those, would that cover the majority of the cost, you think?
It's hard to say. I just did get preliminary numbers before the meeting. And I have to, I do want to go back and, and have a discussion with Contagity. They helped kind of put in, both architects also helped put together some, some just high cost assessments for, for potential facility. And right now, there, there's, there's parts of it that we need to look at. How do you build this out over phases if that, if those long-term, if those loans are, are in play? I think we'd be, if, we could potentially, um, we could potentially receive about five hundred thousand dollars of grant, of grants between the two sources of funding. That is math. I don't guarantee that that's what we'll ultimately get approved for, knowing how innovation funding works. Sometimes if you're the last project to be approved, you may not get your full amount of funding that's involved in the project.
Any other questions for John about that? Other items?
Uh, Council President?
Go ahead.
We had an email from Jeff and Michelle Walvo, talking about, um, other communities that where the city council had, um, passed a resolution to, um, or actually a proclamation, was it a resolution or a proclamation? Anyway, stating that the governor's, um, edicts, I guess, are not unconstitutional and saying that they were gonna, the communities themselves were gonna reopen. Um, I'm assuming everyone got that email?
Yeah.
Yes? Okay. So, um, I think it's worthy of discussion. You know, if it's not, it's, if it's not on our agenda, that means the, the decision has already been made by whoever makes, writes the agenda, that it's a no. But I think it would be worthwhile to bring it before the council so that the entire council can vote on it, rather than just, no, we're not doing this, we're not putting it on the agenda. So, um, I don't know how anyone else feels about it, but I think it'd be.
Did you get the email from the league? Or did you read the email from the league?
Did that come today? If it came today, I didn't read it.
Okay.
Mayor and council member, uh, if I could, if I could offer something here? We have a, a draft of a resolution that addresses some of the concerns with the leagues, uh, as the league does with this particular, the Lakefield Resolution, uh, and some of the problems that it has with the types of liability it might open up the city to, uh, that we could certainly share with you. The version we have gets across the point without leaving the city open to those liabilities. If you would like me to share that with John to share with you or some.
Well, other cities are finding ways to get resolutions passed, and I'm, I'm, I'm making the assumption that they have some sort of legal representation as well, and they're finding a way to move forward. Frankly, I would have been prepared to have a resolution two weeks ago.
Did you read the league's, did you read the league's letter about liability? And, and what would happen if the city said that they could all open and then the attorney general charged them? Would we be responsible?
Talking about saying opening, it's about, about putting pressure on the governor, I mean, the cities.
Again, that's not the one I read. The ones I read talked about allowing them to open.
At any rate, I, I, I believe that it weren't discussion. I think it's something we need to talk about.
Mr. President, has, uh, has anybody talked to the city attorney, uh, as far as, uh, what can be done legally and what can't be done?
That was listed that, that is our city attorney, they, and they're working on a draft resolution that would be, um, would align with what their opinion would be of what we can legally do and what we need to.
It feels like it's kind of far away, but can we put that on our, um, work session for next time?
Yeah, hopefully it's a moot point.
Hopefully it will be unnecessary by then.
Yes, please, can we do that?
Ma'am, you can also, um, email the governor or call him, leave a message. Um, I did, and I got a call back. And, uh, like, the legislators will tell you, um, that's the path that, to take, and, uh, we vote in November, so no matter which way you go.
Constituent complaints, we got a couple minutes?
Yes, Mr. President, I, I have two. I'll do the easier one first, and that's independent of the email we got on the streetlights on First Street. Um, the streetlights that have gone in over here on the southeast part of town are very bright. I'm hearing from some folks that they're shining in, in windows. And, uh, I took a walk last night, and there's many that, uh, one side of the, the street would be dark, and then somebody's yard is lit up like a baseball field. And so I'm just, uh, wondering, Greg, Kim, and is, is it possible to have those aimed, adjusted, or look into some kind of diffuser? If not, I mean, some of them are, they're really bad. I can see why people don't appreciate having the lights coming in there.
Yes, so they are updating those with LED lights, and so those can be turned, um, and adjusted and, and shine so that they're on the road as opposed to in the, uh, roadway. So you have locations, I could definitely tap on Minnesota Power and see if those can get adjusted.
Okay, well, that's, they're basically all of them, they put in the southeast part of town here.
Okay.
And then, uh, the, the other thing is, I sent an email last week talking about a city resident that was blocked from the Humane Society's Facebook page. And I find that absolutely outrageous and unacceptable that an organization that takes taxpayer money then blocks one of those city taxpayers. So do we have an update on, on that at all?
Oh, Leif, I said I would take care of it. I called Byron Quinn. He was the, um, chairman of the Board, Board of Directors. And, uh, he didn't return my call for a couple of days, and when he did, um, he gave me the name of the new person, and I haven't gotten to that person yet, but I will follow that up this week.
Okay, well, I, I mean, where I'm at, I'm, the, in my opinion, this needs to be rectified. It needs to be rectified quickly, and if it's not, I will remember this when we start our budget talks for the next year.
And also, it could just, FYI, it could be somebody that's constantly, and I have no idea, but I'm going to take the other side. It could be somebody that's putting accusations and trashing on things like that.
I don't care, Mayor. You take the, you take the good with the bad. When you're an organization like that, you have to be open to criticism. You can't just block people.
Well, we'll disagree then.
As long as it's not vulgar. Okay.
Um, at seven thirty, we're going to adjourn our work session for May eighteenth. And we'll start our regular city council meeting of May eighteenth, two thousand twenty. I believe we're all here. Let's stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All individuals are asked to either silence or turn off all cell phones, pagers, and other electronic devices that may disrupt the meeting. Approval of the agenda, approve the agenda as posted in accordance with open meeting law. In here, place all agenda items on the table for discussion. Reminder, we did add under new business, item G, liquor license fees.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Canofla, second by Councilmember Hanson. Call roll, please.
Canofla?
Yes.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Dillka?
Yes.
Horka?
Yes.
Thorley?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Gary?
Approval of the minutes, special work session meeting of May fourth, two thousand twenty, and the regular meeting of May fourth, two thousand twenty, approved. Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Storey, second by Councilmember Liljegren. Any discussion? Call roll, please.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Dillka?
Yes.
Horka?
Yes.
Thorley?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Canofla?
Yes.
Gary?
Approval of the bills, checks one zero two five five nine through one zero two six five eight, totaling four hundred and eighty-nine thousand, four hundred and eight dollars and eighty-six cents, approved. Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Storey, second by Councilmember Canofla. Call roll, please.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Dillka?
Yes.
Horka?
Yes.
Thorley?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Canofla?
Yes.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Gary?
Awards, donations, presentations, and proclamations. From a proclamation of Little Falls Community Schools, Class of Two Thousand Twenty, Mayor Dillka.
Uh, hold on one second here, minimizing. Whereas Two Thousand Twenty gave way to unprecedented circumstances which have prohibited typical high school graduation, year-end activities, and celebrations. And whereas Little Falls Community High School seniors have exhibited incredible strength, resiliency, and flyer pride. And whereas the Class of Two Thousand Twenty makes our community and school system a fantastic place to live and learn. And whereas educators at Little Falls Community Schools work closely and passionately with our students and families to provide a wonderful education. And whereas this Little Falls Community High School Class of Two Thousand Twenty makes our citizens proud of their commitment to responsible citizenship in this unprecedented time of COVID- nineteen. And whereas the Class of Two Thousand Twenty will be our future leaders, pioneers, creators, motivators, and role models. And whereas the community of Little Falls supports and congratulates all the students who will continue to influence our community long after this current crisis has ended. Now, therefore, I, Gregory J. Dillka, Mayor of the City of Little Falls, Minnesota, who hereby proclaim, May fifteenth, two thousand, or Two Thousand Twenty, through May twenty-fourth, Two Thousand Twenty, a time of appreciation for the dedication of the Little Falls Community High School Class of Two Thousand Twenty, who have worked hard, persevered, and risen to the challenges before them, dated the sixth day of May, two thousand and twenty.
Consent agenda, animal control report, April Two Thousand Twenty received. Application for exempt permit, St. Mary's Church Raffle, rescheduled date approved. Fire report, April Two Thousand Twenty received. Morrison County Attorney's Prosecution Report, March and April Two Thousand Twenty received. Wastewater Report, April Two Thousand Twenty received. Water Report, April Two Thousand Twenty received. What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Goschek, second by Councilmember Storey. Call a roll, please.
Dillka?
Yes.
Horka?
Yes.
Thorley?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Canofla?
Yes.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Gary?
Public hearings and lettings, we have none. Old business, resilient communities, regional sustainable development partnership brand, University of Minnesota Natural Resource-Based Wayfinding and Signage Plan, authorize and approve, ready?
Before this evening, we have the Regional Sustainable Development Partnership, uh, application, which is through the University of Minnesota. The HBC, the Heritage Preservation Committee's Farm Kind of Working Group for Waste Finding and Signs. And we're at a point where we can apply for the full application to the U of M. Uh, what we do is we partner with the U of M for grad students and potential professors to help us look at ways to improve the wayfinding and, uh, signage downtown and various, um, historic properties throughout Little Falls. So with the council's approval, we would like to apply for this, uh, this, uh, um, partnership to work with the U of M on these wayfinding signs within the city of Little Falls.
Motion to accept and approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Storey, second by Councilmember Lundberg. Any discussion? Call a roll, please.
Horka?
Yes.
Thorley?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Canofla?
Yes.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Dillka?
Yes.
Gary?
New business golf course recommendations. Um, Richard McCalla are from them. Number one is Amanda Hanson, lead clubhouse attendant, Andrew Poster, groundskeeper, returning to accept and appoint.
I'll take that, Council President.
Thank you, John.
The, the application process and, and interviews for the, um, for all, all the positions, and we have these, these are for the lead poddus attendant and, uh, groundkeeper that are returning. Um, the, the others are for new hires.
What is the wish of the council?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Canofla, second by Councilmember Goschek. Any discussion? Call a roll, please.
Thorley?
Yes.
Hanson?
I will abstain, well, the last name on one of them might look a little familiar.
Goschek?
Yes.
Canofla?
Yes.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Dillka?
Yes.
Horka?
Yes.
Gary?
Brendan Kojowski and Landon Johnson, lead clubhouse attendant. Brendan Kojowski and Landon Johnson, lead clubhouse attendants, new.
So the, yeah, so these positions were for the new, um, newly defined lead clubhouse attendant. Um, previously, we had bartender and waitstaff segregated at, or pro shop attendant that was segregated as positions. We've combined them all into, into one. So these were the new, new hires that came out of the, that application process and process that were completed with McCalla and Sharon.
What is the wish of the council?
Move to approve, Mr. President.
Second.
I'm not sure who the second was from.
Yes, it was for me.
Okay. Motion by council member Storley, second by council member Diljigrin. Any discussion? Call a roll, please.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Canofla?
Yes.
Diljigrin?
Yes.
Lundberg? Guest? Dillka?
Yes.
Horka?
Yes.
Dorley?
Yes.
Gary?
Jeff Udi, Nick Abbott, Brian Stuckmeyer, Nathan Bozer, groundskeepers. John?
Thank you, Council President. They were, these are the, the four candidates that were interviewed, um, and approved out of the recommend, uh, the committee, the interview committee, uh, for the groundskeeper positions. These are the outside groundskeepers.
What is the wish of the council?
Mister President, I motion we accept and approve the groundskeepers.
Second.
Motion by council member Hanson, second by council member Canofla. Any discussion? Call a roll, please.
Bushick?
Yes.
Canofla?
Yes.
Diljigrin?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Dillka?
Yes.
Horka?
Yes.
Dorley?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gary?
Now, for the police department recommendations. Um, item one, Jillian Robinson, full-time patrol officer, accept and appoint.
Uh, Mister President, would it be possible to act on number three first so we could vacate the position before we fill it?
That would probably be a good idea.
Uh, what? Uh, the interview committee is recommending appointing Derek Nagorski to the position of police sergeant. Uh, the interview committee consisted of Assistant Attorney, uh, Mike Chisel, uh, the mayor of Little Falls, uh, Captain Kyle Johnson of the police department here, and, uh, the city administrator, John. Uh, there were four current police officers that applied for the position. All four were interviewed. And, uh, the committee is recommending that Derek Nagorski be appointed, uh, to that position. And the vacancy was created by the promotion of Craig Seeland, fire chief.
What is the wish of the council?
Move to concur with the interview committee.
Second.
Motion by council members Storley, second by council member Hanson. Any discussion?
He pointed you on him, sworn in.
If, as soon as you, uh, make the appointment, I will bring him in. He's here now if you'd like.
Okay.
Call a roll, please.
Canofla?
Yes.
Diljigrin?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Dillka?
Yes.
Horka?
Yes.
Dorley?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Gary?
I'll go back to number one, chief.
Okay, I'll, uh, I'll get Derek and have the mayor swear to me now.
Okay.
I think he's gonna have some family with too.
It's too bad we can't do this part in person?
Yes, it is. Are you ready?
Yes.
Can you repeat after me? I, Derek Nagorski, do solemnly swear.
I, Derek Nagorski, do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
To support the Constitution of the, of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
The Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
I will faithfully and, uh, lawfully discharge.
The duties of police sergeant for the city of Little Falls.
The duties of police sergeant of the city of Little Falls.
To the best of my abilities, so help me God.
To the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Jack.
Congratulations, Sergeant.
Congratulations.
I must have clapped too hard, I lost my Zoom. Thank you, congratulations. So let's go back to item one. With our Jillian Robinson, full-time patrol officer, accept the point. Chief.
All right, the interview committee, uh, is recommending hiring Jillian Robinson for the vacancy, uh, full-time police officer position. And Mitchell Morris and Sam Kaplan for the two vacant part-time positions, and I know we'll get to that next. Uh, there were twenty-six applicants that applied for the open position. And from those applicants, twenty-one were interviewed via Zoom. Uh, the first interview panel consisted of, uh, Sergeant Ruby, uh, Captain Johnson, and myself. Uh, eleven candidates were invited back for a second interview. Uh, the second interview committee, uh, committee consisted of, uh, HR, VHR Director, um, Michael Payne, uh, Pierce Police Officer, Calvin Cheetah, uh, the mayor, and myself. Uh, the full-time position will be replacing the va- the vacancy, uh, in the schedule by the promotion of Derek Nagorski to police sergeant.
What is the wish of the council?
Move to, uh, concur with the interview committee.
Second.
So you were saying item one and two on our agenda, following your motion?
That is correct, Mister President.
So motion by council member Storley, second by council member Lundberg. Any discussion?
Mister President?
Yes.
Chief, would you just talk about some of the things that, uh, Jillian Robinson brings to the table for us?
Uh, I was, I think all of us on the interview, uh, interview committee were very impressed with her, uh, background and her job experience. Uh, she's got extensive investigative experience with the agency she's currently with. Uh, a lot to do with, uh, vi- victim advocacy, uh, something that, uh, I think she'll bring some real, um, uh, a new, fresh perspective, uh, to this, uh, to our agency and to, uh, the county as a whole. So I think we're very lucky, uh, to have her come on board.
Call a roll, please.
Diljigrin?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Dillka?
Yes.
Horka?
Yes.
Dorley?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Canofla?
Yes.
Gary?
Item four, authorize additional part-time patrol officer, Zachariah Goan. Approve, accept, and appoint. Chief.
All right, um, so as we discussed at earlier meetings, uh, we, I explained the need for a full-time officer, which we just filled, we mentioned part-time officers, uh, which we also just filled. Um, since we started this process, I, I've been notified that, uh, I have, I'll have an officer out of the schedule uh, for an extended period of time, possibly permanently for, uh, medical, uh, problems. Um, so I currently have two officers out of the full-time rotation, uh, due to medical restrictions. Um, I currently have our school resource officer back in the rotation for the summer to cover some of those shifts. So that's offsetting, uh, some of the need. But, uh, I believe, uh, the addition of one more part-timer, uh, would help, one more part-time officer would help us, uh, fill the schedule. It would also allow us to train up these part-time officers, uh, to be, uh, ready if we have some more vacancies, which I expect. Um, these two, uh, officers that are currently out, uh, they may or may not be able to come back to work. So this would allow us to train these whole, these, uh, other two part-time officers up. And, uh, so if these vacancies are created, then they can step into those roles.
What is the wish of the council?
Round four, right?
Well, it looks like four and five are really almost the same thing.
Okay, that being said, I'll make a motion to approve, accept, appoint, authorize, part-time patrol officer.
Second.
Motion by council member Hanson, second by council member Storley. Any discussion? Call a roll, please.
Lundberg?
Guest?
Dillka?
Yes.
Horka?
Yes.
Dorley?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Canofla?
Yes.
Diljigrin?
Yes.
Gary?
Planning Commission recommendations. Uh, American with Disabilities Act ADA Transition Plan. Greg.
So the planning commission held a public hearing on May eleventh, last Monday, in regards to our ADA transition plan. Um, as you recall, back in twenty eighteen, we were successful in obtaining Safe House School Grant. Those funds are available to the city, uh, payable in twenty twenty-three. Now, we can do the project ahead of time, but our money will not be available to us until twenty twenty-three. Um, what those requirements entail is that we illustrate that we comply with the ADA transition within the public right-of-way. So that's kind of where this plan started. Um, we did look at all of the city, uh, streets, sidewalks, uh, pet ramps, that type of stuff. And we did find a number of areas where we can improve, and obviously we will continue to improve those with our, our construction projects. Um, but this is kind of a working document to move forward in terms of trying to get our, uh, pedestrian routes as ADA compliant as, as possible. Uh, we are asking the council to approve this, this evening. Uh, after our public hearing and our planning commission meeting, we did have one comment after the meeting, we had some technical difficulties with, uh, mute button and stuff. Uh, the main comments that were, I received from that, uh, meeting afterward is that, uh, keeping the handicap spots open. Have handicap spots at the city parks, as well as an ADA plan for all of the city facilities. Uh, and so we're working on those, uh, as I said, this is a working document, so we'll continue to work on those, uh, in the future here. The city facility one is gonna be a much larger project, um, and so that'll take quite a bit lo- longer to complete, but it probably is worthwhile, uh, doing that one as well.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by council member Goschek, second by council member Diljigrin. Any discussion?
Yeah, Mister President, uh, I have a question. If we go down to, I believe it's page fourteen of the twenty-one, it's, it's, it's in the complaint procedure. Um, is that correct? Where if the city administrator gives a response, and it's not satisfac- satisfactory to the complaint, then they file another complaint right back with that same individual that just denied them?
So the complaint procedure is really, uh, a template that we receive from, uh, Mendoc in terms of what the process should be for the complaints. So, yes, uh, that is the template that they use, and I know a number of other communities around the area, um, who are also getting federal funds for Safe Houses School and various projects. It's very similar to that same complaint project process.
Can you, can you, can you explain to me what the rationale is? Is it if an individual has already denied a complaint, to file a whole nother complaint with that same individual again?
They may be able to bring other information forward as far as why they feel it should be overturned, or whether something else that they may have missed. Um, so it, it just gives it another, another opportunity for them to plead their case and, and show what reasoning they would have to file by complaint.
Okay, that's all I have. Call a roll, please.
Dillka?
Yes.
Horka?
Yes.
Dorley?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Canofla?
Yes.
Diljigrin?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Guest?
Gary?
Use of city property, Chris Anderson. Accept and deny. Greg.
So we received a request from, uh, Chris Anderson to use the city property to join adjacent to the parcel that, uh, he currently owns. Um, he is looking at building a sizable shed in the backyard. Um, and he's requesting access through the city parcel in order to get access for the construction purposes of this. Um, originally, I did deny that request to Mister Anderson. His sense, uh, appealed to the planning commission, ultimately the council, in terms of being able to use that. My concern is a couple twofold with the, with, with the request. I know with the, the size of the building that he's looking at putting up, it does meet the impervious coverage limits, but it does, in that request, we do not see any sort of, um, permanent access to it, so any sort of driveway or anything. Any driveway that he would put in there that would have impervious material, whether it be gravel or blacktop or concrete, that would put them over the impervious coverage limit. So there's a little bit of, um, unanswered questions in terms of how we would be accessing that particular shed in a permanent fashion. Um, in addition to that, looking at the construction through the city's lot would ultimately, I mean, there would be some damage to the, the city lot. I know he indicated he would restore it, but if you're looking at building a shed and using it for, or storage of some sort of facility or, or material, um, there needs to be some permanent access to that, uh, to that shed. And so that would be the reasoning that we would be looking to deny that request. The planning commission did recommend, uh, four to one, uh, vote to deny the request as well.
What's the wish of the council?
I would make a motion to deny.
Second.
That Mister Storley?
Yes, it was, Mister President.
Motion by Mayor Zilka? Second. Uh, by council member Storley. Discussion?
Yes, Mister President, uh, I actually went and looked at this lot twice. Um, I think we have a couple things going on here, so, and I want to make sure I have it right. Greg, so we're talking about something that, as it stands right now, would be of, just a permitted project, no variance needed, or anything like that at this time?
Correct.
Um, this guy, to get his shed built back there, is going to have a very difficult time going through the front of his yard. Um, frankly, he's gonna have a difficult time going through the side of his yard. Fence is gonna have to come down on the front. He's potentially looking at trees coming out. Um, I don't oftentimes like to go against our volunteer boards like the planning commission here, but it's, it's a empty lot. He's promised to restore it. I would be in favor of letting him do it. I mean, we let Anderson Custom Processing use, uh, public right-of-way with putting up fence and stuff like that. Uh, I just, I mean, they're empty. If somebody purchases, purchases that lot next door, they're gonna be doing a bunch of dirt work anyway to, to build a house.
My question was, how is he gonna get to his shed then? Use our lot again?
That's his problem after it's built.
Unless he's driving through our lot.
Well, the garage door is not on the lot's side. It's on the same side as the house. So if he was going to drive a vehicle into that garage, it would make sense he'd drive up next to the house. And he'd have to drive over his lawn. Is there anything in the ordinance saying he can't drive on his lawn to access his garage? Or does he have to have a driveway?
So the ordinance does not require gravel or anything like that. But if he's going to drive on his lawn to get to the shed in the back, he would be able to drive on his lawn to build the shed in the back as well. I mean, that's where it's a little confusing to me is if he's going to use the shed in a permanent situation, why wouldn't use that same access in order to build the garage?
Did he make any effort to clarify that with your question to that?
He indicated it was just for storage.
Any other discussion? Not call or roll, please.
Perkak?
Yes.
Storley?
Uh, yes.
Hanson?
No.
Bushik?
I'm voting no, that he can't go on this city property, right?
The mayor's motion was to deny.
Okay, I vote to deny.
Oh, yes. One second, please. Anafla?
Yes.
Volkeren?
Yes.
Lucker?
Yes.
Zoka?
Yes.
So the motion carries, the request is denied.
Item D, Fellowship, Emily Reno, Leadership for America, approved. John.
Thank you, Council President. As I discussed in the work session, I'm looking for the support from the council to authorize a fellowship agreement for Emily Reno. This would be a partnership with Lead for America. The way the fellowship operates is we actually make a contribution upfront to Lead for America, and they then pay that fellow a monthly stipend for housing, care, and some other expenses related to guidelines that are set forth through the AmeriCorps. With this, we do have some existing financial commitments that are going to offset the cost of this fellowship. Through Lead for America, we'll receive AmeriCorps funding for this, so that's offsetting the cost of the fellowship, about fifteen thousand dollars per year for the two-year agreement. We do have a financial through Sourcewell that we can utilize our internship dollars that we have for every semester in which the fellowship is utilized for the city. And that equates to fifteen thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars per year, as well as a indication through the institution that we can apply for a five-thousand-dollar grant because this fellowship position would be working towards economic development-related projects. And those five-thousand-dollar grants are dedicated to the communities within the region. And despite the current situation, they stated that those dollars are still going to be allocated out to cities that apply for them. And we know that that funding source is available. It is not certain whether that would be available in year two. So the initial event would be through EDA, and then we would be reimbursed through our partner agreements for Sourcewell and the Initiative Foundation. The net cost impact for year one?
I think John just froze.
If it were not to include that, I didn't catch up.
Well, you're moving again. We didn't hear the dollar amount for year one and year two.
Okay. Okay, so I didn't hear the dollar amount for year one and year two. Start this over. Year one, it would net to six thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one dollars as a cost, which I would recommend be paid out of the EDA operating budget. And then in year two, without a grant, but we would be, we certainly would be eligible to apply for additional funding. But without that, I'm certain, or I'm, without any additional funding sources, the cost would be eleven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Motion by Councilmember Goschek, second by Councilmember Kahlberg. Discussion.
Mr. President? John, and I know this isn't typical, but I've been thinking about this, and I see we also have an administrative intern coming up. Could we get some kind of a report from the person, or whether monthly or quarterly, just so we know what they're up to? And what they're accomplishing? And I don't know, and maybe that can just come through you. But it's nice to know of all these people that we have had internships with us, you know, what the effect is and what they feel they've accomplished and what they've learned.
Yes, that is actually included in the fellowship agreement, that there are monthly reports that have to be submitted, and those will be coming forward to the council.
Good, thank you.
John, just out of curiosity, what is this individual's master's degree in?
It is, I believe, urban planning and development. Her focused area has been more closely aligned to rural communities. So in urban planning, doesn't necessarily mean urban as in a very large city. It is just any type of municipal planning work.
Yep, I get that. But what happens with this fellowship? I mean, it's a minimum of two years, and this person has a master's degree. What happens a year into this if she gets a job with a community somewhere?
Their commitment, they're signing a contract to commit for a two-year program, with actually, the intent is that they're committing to communities for four years. The communities themselves, so how we're financing this is only the two-year commitment. And then it's for additional years of service, it is expected that the fellowship would be working towards finding a way to fund that, their program, and offset their costs in those future years. So they would be working towards some sort of agreements and partnerships with other organizations, either to, I think, or else just working, letting the fellowship pass. But that is when they originally presented it. There are other agreements that they have. They have, it is, they're expected to be working on plans for longer-term commitments than the initial two years.
Seems like a little money for a lot of education and probably the debt that goes along with it. Is there something addressing that behind the scenes? Is there like a student loan debt forgiveness for completing this program?
I'm not certain of that. That would be something that Lead for America would know. I believe that they are also, their commitment for this is thirty hours a week, and Emily would actually be, as other opportunities, be doing some other work that is, that there does come some funding with that. So she has another partnership or dealing up, but it wouldn't be, ours would be the primary time. It would be expected, it would be smaller, smaller. And not to be extending for the entire number of the fellowship. So with that, we're not precluding them from looking for other projects or things that they could be earning a revenue or income from. I would really kind of look at this not as a specific position for the city like we do with our internship programs where they're dedicated to doing work with us. They are more like a, in a way where, the discussion I've had with Emily and Lead for America was to kind of look at this like as an independent vector with specific goals in mind. And that's where we kind of outline in those bullets what we, the focus areas that we have. But it's, it is intentional on supporting our community, and that's what it's dedicated for, and those are the project goals, and that's why we have the monthly reporting as part of the requirement. So we want to see as this project is going on, what sort of progress we're receiving. But the goal here is to achieve, meet achievement, you know, we're seeing projects actually being accomplished. So that's, you know, part of the way that this is structured versus just, you're a city employee, and we're going to assign you to these projects. We're coming up with something that we agree, we've agreed in the forefront that will be the projects that we want to work on, and they're very much economically relevant.
The other questions? Call or roll, please.
Dorley?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushik?
Yes.
Anafla?
Yes.
Volkeren?
Yes.
Kahlberg?
Yes.
Zoka?
Yes.
Perkak?
Yes.
Harry?
Resolution two thousand twenty dash thirty-three. Submit Innovation Funding Grant Application, Farmers Market Pavilion Sourcewell. Approve and adopt. John.
Council President, again, as I said in the work session, this is a required resolution for the application to the innovation funding through Sourcewell. But this would not be the only source that we'd be looking at for funding. There is another grant application that's available and has a deadline, initial pocket through the USDA, and that would be used in partnership with these funds. We were successful to achieve the innovation grant funding. We have some, in talking about the project, we, it's, the grant funds that we'd be eligible are around, are up to five hundred thousand. So we'd be trying to size the project accordingly in this faith to make it stay within that budget. So I have done some, I just got the results of that tonight, so I don't, unfortunately don't have them available for this. But I'll bring this forward at the next meeting to talk more about what the plan design that we're going to present in the final application. If you're not familiar with the way innovation funding works, is you do a presentation before a large group. Well, this year it is a virtual presentation, but when we, so those projects that are presented on that day get ranked by the participants in that, and then the ones that have the highest rank, if they fall within the threshold of the funding for that Sourcewell is put forward for innovation funding, then they get the dollars that they're requesting and being moved forward. So we do have some more details that we will fine-tune and out, and I will bring forward those at the next council meeting. But right now, the highest amount that we'd be eligible to receive in a project that we want to try to stay under or within that budget for is five hundred. And if this, and if we are not, it will be very clear that we would be postponing this until we either postpone the project or cancel it, until we could secure additional funding to support this project. It's something that, at this time, those resources and grant opportunities are available to us. So in conversation with the mayor, we directed me to seek a project that we could get some funding for, knowing that our local option sales tax project is now not eligible to us due to the impact that they had in legislative session. So we wanted to try to find something that we could, if we could get majority of the funding for, or if not all, that can make an impact, that we do. Really looking at this facility to be a multi-purpose site. It's, we do have, I did receive today a letter of support from a nonprofit organization that has the farmers market on the west side and operating that two days a week. They were part, there are few members of that were part of the local foods local places workshop back in June. So they knew about this as a potential project, and with this being an opportunity, they would definitely come forward as a partner with us in helping operate it on those market days. And then in the long term, if you recall, when the block parties last summer for the big dig, we certainly could use a physicality to be hosting events, you know, a shelter, a roofed shelter that could, you know, host a music or concert venue or something like that on a smaller stage. Yeah, smaller stage venue, I think would be really, really quite an added benefit for our community. So what we've seen with farmers markets is they do have, definitely have a regional impact draw. If you know the drought farmers market that they do winter marketplace, they have vendors from probably forty mile radius to our community, maybe even more than that. So it's definitely something that our region, I don't think has a facility like this. Certainly could have a large draw for those that would be using it as a vendor, as well as what we've seen throughout the community when we were hosting tournaments.
What is the wish of the council? I'll make a motion to approve and adopt Resolution twenty twenty dash thirty-three.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mayor Zoka, second by Councilmember Goschek. Discussion. Call or roll, please.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushik?
Yes.
Anafla?
Yes.
Volkeren?
Yes.
Kahlberg?
Yes.
Zoka?
Yes.
Perkak?
Yes.
Dorley?
Yes.
Harry?
Stone Conley, Administrative Intern, approved. John.
Thank you, Council President. A professor at the University of South, a former colleague of mine, or classmate of mine, is now the director of their master's Public Administration Department. He contacted me about a student that ended a program that had an internship with the City of Vermillion, South Dakota, that was unfortunately canceled due to the impacts financially that they had with the COVID-19. You know, see if there was any ideas or opportunities that I might know of for our community. And you've heard tonight a lot of different projects that we certainly could use some technical support in working on ADA Transition Plan and disabilities being a huge one, and having somebody that. So I met with Stone last week and discussed this about a potential of doing something that was remote, and certainly doing something that was unpaid, because we, you know, obviously that just indicated our internship or reimbursement to the fellowship. So I wouldn't have that available as an administrative reimbursement at twelve dollars an hour from Sourcewell. And he agreed that for him would not be a burden, and he really, his interest is receiving that he needs to work to get this as a credit that would also be required for him to achieve his master's of public administration. So I believe he is, from the input that he gave me with So I believe he is a, from the input that he gave me with his resume, from the input from his professor, very hard worker and would be very excited and interested in serving in this capacity. And I don't doubt that with multiple departments, we can find enough work for him to do and find a way to do it remotely. You know, if nothing, what this process has taught us is how to, you know, be adaptive, especially working in these remote environments. And I think this could be a real benefit for us to have an additional resource to be able to accomplish this work. Part of the requirements I typically put forward in internship agreements or internship programs are presentations to the council. And so Stone has talked about potentially if the restrictions on travel and things are lifted, that he would be interested in coming up here way before weekend and seeing the community, and then staying around for that council presentation at some point in the summer. If not, if we find ourselves doing these remote meetings in the long term, we certainly can make that happen without any difficulty. And we could probably find ways to make this happen for some of our presenters in the future when we go back to that real meeting space. So having been an intern before and a graduate student of the University of South Dakota, I think, I know what he's going through, and I'd be remiss to say that this would be a great fit for us and at a very minimal cost, if nothing. We've actually allocated, for previous, allocated office accounts, Office 365 accounts. So we have those already that are paid for. So there's no additional cost to give him access to that account, and no additional cost to us for creating, for him to be a participant alongside us in Zoom meetings. So I think we can find, easily find within our existing resources the ways that we can incorporate into the work that we can, that can be beneficial to us to complete.
What is the wish of the council?
Motion approved.
I'll second that.
Motion by Councilmember Knopfler, second by Councilmember Goschek. Any discussion?
Mr. President, I have a question. John, what do we normally, where are we paying interns? And I know it was money through our hands, right, coming from Sourcewell?
So, yeah, previously, they're paid out of the department that they're working for, and then we have, we can have agreements with Sourcewell. It used to work that the intern was actually employed by Sourcewell, and then they, we signed off on their hourly pay from Sourcewell. Those agreements changed last year in the fall, I believe. So we had Chad Peterson, that was a wastewater intern that we'd actually been on what now is a reimbursement agreement through Sourcewell. So we paid Chad, and then we get reimbursed twelve dollars an hour up to six hundred and forty dollars is the total for that internship per semester. So that's, normal internship agreements would now in the future be working that way, where we'd hire them on, pay them whatever it is, the wages.
And Sourcewell just doesn't have the fund available right now for this type of thing?
No, it was, it was that they didn't have, they legally felt that those arrangements worked did not align with their...
Where I'm going with this, I, it, right, it's hard to argue with something that doesn't cost any money, but I almost don't feel right about this. Is it, is it common to have somebody intern this position unpaid? I know he said he's getting credit.
I would say probably fifteen, twenty years ago is much more common. Paid internships are starting to be, you know, the standard, which I agree, they should be. You know, the work that they can do definitely warrants compensation. However, in this instance, you know, he really does need something that can qualify for an internship so that it's our requirements to...
My point is, we'll proceed to get this done, but like I said, it doesn't, it almost doesn't feel right to me. We're going to get, we're going to get value from this individual somehow. So just me personally, if you find a way maybe to make this paid, I don't know where the funds are going to come from, but I would, personally, I would be open to exploring that. I mean, people should get paid for their labor.
Well, Kelly or John, haven't there been some unpaid internships through CVB?
I think that the ones that the CVB had were paid for by, who were they paid for by, John?
I'm not certain. I know the students have all been through the St. Clair State Program, and I don't know if there was partnerships through like the Minnesota's Venture Visor Bureau kind of state organization or workhorse resources to help, you know, pay the intern.
I can't remember rough hand, I'd have to look it up, but I know that they were paid and we didn't pay them.
Yeah, they were not paid from the locals. Stone himself has done unpaid internships before. He actually interned for Senator Grassley of Iowa for two years. So it's, he's not, himself, it's an experience that he's lived with. He's doing, his interest in this work is for the experience that he's going to gain because he wants to go into this profession, so.
Call or roll, please.
Goschik?
Yes.
Knopfler?
Yes.
Wilkibin?
Yes.
Lumber?
Guest.
Wilco?
Yes.
Furtak?
Yes.
Corley?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Karys?
Liquor license fee. Let's try out Should Be Titled, Lori.
So we discussed briefly in the work session the potential for refunding the on-sale liquor license in a proportion to share to the amount of time that the local bars and restaurants that have on-sale liquor licenses were closed. So the discussion, I guess, is, you know, is, would the council entertain making that refund? The licenses are three thousand dollars a year. They've been closed just over two months, so refunding or the liquor license for those two months would be five hundred dollars.
Mr. President, would you like a motion for that?
Please.
I would make a motion to forgive or pay back prorated share of their liquor license based on when they could not have the sales. And that's for the ones that have paid for the year. And then I would also recommend that the ones that have paid the first half and have to pay the second half, that we would discount it by the amount that we're forgiving. And also, I would, as part of that, I would like to see that deferred for one month, the last half payoff.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Zilka, second by Councilmember Hanson. Discussion.
I wonder if we shouldn't just say a flat amount that we're going to refund, like Lori said, five hundred. I think that, that dollar amount should be in the motion. So if it's for the people that have paid in full, we refund them five hundred dollars. For those who have yet the second half to pay, they pay five hundred dollars less, and it's not due until July instead of being due in June.
Mr. President, I believe when we prorated it for the bowling center, that we prorated it based on the time that they would be open and they could use those services, so I believe proration is fair. I don't want it to be less than what prorated would be, and I don't think they expect more.
Council President?
Yes, John?
I would just say too, I would be concerned if this, if their closure orders start up again later. You know, to be flexible to have the authorization to do that, I think it might fall within what the mayor talked about, the prorated number. Because we, you know, we certainly don't, and there may be impacts to this down the road if cases resurge in the fall. We might be looking at something else again.
Well, not only that, we're at, we're at two months right now, basically, right? So I don't think we want to specify a certain dollar amount right now because we just don't know. Now, all the indications are looking that this is probably going to be lifted June 1st, but we don't know that for sure.
Good point, Liz.
Okay. I can stay.
Call or roll, please.
Knopfler?
Yes.
Wilkibin?
Yes.
Lumber?
Guest.
Wilco?
Yes.
Furtak?
Yes.
Corley?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Goschik?
Yes.
Karys?
City Council reports on city authorities, boards, bureaus, commissions, and committees. Does anyone have anything?
Mr. President? I would, sorry? No, that's all right. I was just going to say quickly that I had conversations last week with, I think it was eight businesses, small businesses from Little Falls, that hadn't heard anything about our EDA loan grant option. So I had discussions with them, and I don't know how many more new ones Lori got, but hopefully we'll get some of our businesses taking part in that. That's it.
Anyone else? Any announcements? We will adjourn our meeting at 8:32. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Have a good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening.